Okay. Ready to begin?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome to the Jersey City Zoning Board of Adjustment Public Meeting. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, you are hereby notified that we have a virtual meeting of the zoning board of adjustment on this particular day, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And what we'd like to do is we'll have a call to order. We have to we'll say our pledge of allegiance.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands by nations indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any sunshine announcements?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk on Tuesday, June thirteenth. We have notices to be marked.
Be one received and marked.
Okay, roll call.
I see Commissioner Shadine.
Yes.
Commissioner. Commissioner.
Yeah.
Commissioner Silva.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Acting Chairman Green.
Here.
We have a total of six commissioners tonight.
Okay. Okay. We would like to say swear in staff.
Staff, do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your full name, starting with Francisco.
Francisco Espinoza.
Cameron Black.
Thank you, Cameron.
Matt Ward.
Thank you, Matt.
And Tanya Marion.
Thank you, Tanya. This is a status word.
I just want you to know that your your name is coming up in Bridget.
It is. I must have opened her link. I
Okay.
I thought I had one, Francisco. Actually, call me Bridget.
Is there any correspondence?
Yes, let me share my screen. Give me one second. All right. All right, can everyone see?
Yes.
Okay, so tonight in a Germans, we have case or item A case Z twenty-two dash zero one six. The address is one eighteen Old Bergen Road. Or one eighteen and one twelve Old Bergen Road. They have requested to carry to August tenth, twenty twenty-three with preservation of notice. And testimony has been taken for this application. In old business, item A case Z twenty-two dash zero six six, the address is one fifty-eight Oakland Avenue. They have requested to carry to June twenty-ninth. That's the next regular meeting with preservation of notice. Going into new business, we have item twelve case Z twenty-two dash zero eight nine. The address is one twenty-eight Glenwood Avenue. They have also requested to carry to June twenty-ninth, which is our next meeting with preservation of notice. Down to item seventeen case Z twenty-one dash zero eight two. The address is seventy-five Crescent Avenue. They have requested to June twenty to carry to June twenty-ninth with preservation of notice. Item eighteen, item nineteen, item twenty, and item twenty-one. So I'll say the addresses, these are all going to be carried to June twenty-nine with preservation of notice. So I'll go to case Z twenty-two dash zero seven seven. The address is one oh four Glenwood. Case Z twenty-two dash zero fifty-three. So this is item number nineteen. The address is eighty-eight Highway one thirty-nine. Item twenty case Z twenty-two dash zero seven five. The address is eight fifty West Side Avenue. And lastly, item twenty-one case Z twenty-two dash zero seven nine. The address is one forty-six to one fifty-two Glenwood Avenue. And these have all carried again to June twenty-ninth with preservation notice.
Okay.
Remaining items are moving forward tonight.
Very good. Thank you. So it's like what we we have is in our new business. Is case nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Just as a notice, we won't start a case after ten o'clock. But anyone that's listening in, just understand that we're going to be working on one case at a times. And hopefully you heard all the cases that were carried. If you have one of those cases, we're not going to cover that tonight. And I'd like to start with case number nine, Z twenty-three dash oh thirty-eight. Can we promote promote those folks?
Hi, good evening. Michael Higgins on behalf of the applicant, two ninety-seventh Street Association LLC. So we're here seeking a one-year extension for previous approvals for C and D variances under original case number Z nineteen dash zero zero one. Which was a four-story, four-unit residential building. Original approvals were memorialized on Thursday, May twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. They did expire on May twenty-seventh of this year, two thousand twenty-three. And we're seeking an additional one year, which would take us to May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. The basis for the request is really because the current cost of construction and the interest rates have made financing of the project impossible for the applicant. So that basically sums up the the extension request for tonight, but I'll answer any questions if the board has any.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay. Is there are there anyone, any citizens that would like to be heard?
At this time, I see no hands raised.
Mister Chair, being as hands raised from the public, I'd like to close case Z twenty-three dash thirty-eight as presented to the board this evening.
Okay. Close that and are you are you making a motion to?
Yes, made a motion. Waiting for a second.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve that one-year extension for case Z twenty-three dash oh thirty-eight. Address at two ninety-seventh street. Those in favor? Roll call.
All right.
So let's let's get the roll call so we can we can capture that information.
Commissioner Shadine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ado.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
And Acting Chairman Green.
Yes. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Our next case. That would be Z twenty-three dash oh twenty-six that address one oh seven two dash one oh seven five West Side Avenue. Promoting applicants.
Good evening.
Evening.
Gregory Asadorian from the Dakota's Law Firm on behalf of the applicant, the Avenir. We are here seeking a one-year extension. The current approvals expire on August first, two thousand twenty-three. We are asking for a one-year extension to August one, two thousand twenty-four. The original approvals are granted in two thousand nineteen under case Z nineteen dash zero zero eight. The reason for the extension is a couple-fold. One, COVID has played a big role in the delay of the development of the property, supply chain issues, also financing and cost of materials have skyrocketed. Also, there there's a possible future Pat Station that may or may not be built, which has delayed the construction of this project. So with that said, we are seeking a one-year extension to August one, two thousand twenty-four, with the understanding that all prior conditions would remain in full force and effect.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions? Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Do you want to ask for public, although I doubt that?
Oh, the public? I I'm sorry. Are there any hands raised?
No, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay.
I know. Close the public.
Close the public. Would someone like to make a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve case Z twenty-three zero twenty-six. Address is ten seventy-two, ten seventy-five West Side Avenue for a one-year extension.
Is there a second?
Oh, sorry, second, second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the one-year extension for the address one zero seven two dash one zero seven five West Side Avenue case Z twenty-three dash oh twenty-six.
On on a motion to
Roll call.
Commissioner Shadine.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Ado.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Acting Chairman Green.
Yes.
Motion carries in favor.
Thank you. And good luck.
Thank you.
We move to the next case, case eleven. That's Z twenty-three dash oh twenty. One-year extension for the four twenty-nine Palisades Avenue address. Promote the applicants, please.
Promoting Thomas Lee.
Evening.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
For the record, Tom Lean of Connell Foley. I believe we did notice for this application, though I don't think it was necessary. I don't know if Mr. La Paglia has those. I don't think it's relevant, but I just did want to point out that we did. We did notice for this application.
Yeah, I know. I know you usually do when you don't have to, but I didn't actually see these notices, but I'm
That that's okay. I'm ready to proceed anyway. This is a request for a third infile notice for an application that was approved back in twenty nineteen. It is at four twenty-nine Palisades Avenue, which I'm sure many of you know is the Palisades Avenue Dry Cleaner. The intent here was to take the existing three-story building and turn it into a five-story building, which this board approved. It is owner occupied. The family runs the business there. Obviously, it was very difficult to actually commence construction during COVID, and the family actually does have elderly parents who do live on site. This is our last request for an extension. It is my understanding that they've begun the permitting process finally. So we're just asking for this additional time to move this along. The final date here would be April twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-four. So.
Okay. Is hands raised? Any public comment?
No hands are raised.
Okay, seeing none. Do we have any questions, Commissioners? Are there any questions? If not, can we get a? Go ahead. Did I hear something?
No, no, I was gonna say, Chair, I'd like to make a motion and close public comments.
Close public comment. Very good. And what I'd like with that is a motion.
Okay, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Casey twenty-three dash zero two zero as presented to the board this evening.
Okay. Good. You make that motion. Who's there's a second?
I second.
Okay. It's been properly seconded to approve the one-year extension for four twenty-nine Palisades Avenue case Z twenty-three dash oh two oh. Roll call.
On a motion to approve, Commissioner Shadine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ado.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Acting Chairman Green.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you.
You very much, everyone.
Okay. We're going on to case thirteen. Z twenty-two dash oh two oh. The address is twenty-one Gardner Avenue. Promote the applicant, please.
Promoting. Oh, there we go. Promoting Joseph.
Welcome.
Hi, good. Good evening. My name is Joe Coward, and I represent to the applicant on twenty-one Gardner Avenue. Just wanted to make sure everyone gets noted. Tonight, Richard Garver of Grow Architects will be testifying. There's also Edwin Raymond, who's our professional engineer on civil plans, and Catherine Gregory is our planner.
So Joe, you know, this is a notice case.
Yes, it is. Have you received the notice? Because
Yes, we have. I got you. You notice your affidavit, your proof of service, notice of publication. It's all in order. So Iris will mark that as A one for this application.
A one has received and marked.
Thank you, Council. So so I'm just looking, making sure everybody's here.
Joe, I don't see. You said Edward.
Edwin Raymond.
Him in the audience or the intent. Is he under a different name?
Um, I don't know. You know, I could text him.
Can raise his hand so I'm able to see.
Okay.
Not many people, but I just can't find.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, you know, we'll get started with Mr. Garber, but just preliminarily, just this is the applicant seeking to rehabilitate a two-and-a-half-story Queen Anne-style house that's it's believed to have been constructed in the eighteen sixties. It's in an R one F zone where one and two family homes are permitted and three family homes are conditional use. Houses long been vacant. It's dilapidated to the point where you know, it's hard to tell how many bedrooms are there. So we conferred with the Historic Preservation Commission and Mr. Garber has come up with plans that'll preserve the historic aesthetics of the building but by raising the roof a few feet, it triggers potential height variance. So I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Garber.
Thank you. Mr. Garber, please raise your red hand to use whether the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last.
Richard Garber, G A R B E R.
Thank you. Witness is sworn.
Thank you. And I'm just going to share my screen. My I've been before this board many times. My license is current. And can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Great, great. So
we accept your qualifications as an architect, so.
Thank you, Mr. La Paglia.
Thank you.
Excellent. So the the house that we're about to show you is a twenty-one gardener. This is a development lot, and it is in the R one F district. And so there are some larger structures around it. And you can see by the images that I'm about to flip through here that the house has not been loved, to say the least. It's in a state of dilapidation and is missing part of the roof, part of floors, et cetera. However, as Mr. Coward has said, it does have some historic significance on Gardner Avenue. And so as I flip through these, we did reach out. You could see the 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 fire department X on the door of the house. It's uninhabitable in this view. We did reach out to Ms. O'Neil, the Historic Preservation Officer, and developed a scheme here to adaptively reuse that structure. Now, we're before the board for two reasons, primarily for one reason, but for two reasons. First, the third the third dwelling unit is a conditional use for the board. And I think I believe that to see variants. Miss Miss Gregory can testify to that. And then what we've decided to do here is raise the roof. And the amount we raised the roof was it was a conscious decision to actually get it up slightly above that that ten percent that we would be allowed for C variants. We are specifically asking for a D variants for height here. And the reason why is because there's a fair amount of evidence that we have seen in the structure that the attic level, the top floor, was actually used as a living space. And in terms of the rehabilitation of the house, our goal is to is to maintain that, keep it as such, and make it a living space. And I'll show you what that looks like in the plans. But to do that based on building code, we actually had to raise the roof up a little bit higher than what would have been permitted at ten percent for the C variants. I'll show you what all of that looks like in our drawings. But hopefully, this is a relatively easy lift, so to speak. Axonometric view here, you can see the house in its proposed state that's before the board with the the addition in the rear, which is expanded. This is the location of the site on Gardner Avenue, and Gardner Avenue is actually a mix of multifamily and one and two family uses. You see to the right two quite large multifamily buildings that extend over to the corner. So that the site is 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 quite varied. But again, our our goal here is to really maintain this. And the R one F district, which you see here outlined in black, is to quote from the LDO, meant to preserve the pattern quality and architectural individuality of the existing detached one and two family homes and discourage subdivision and demolition. This district is similar to the R one zone, except that it is intended to protect clusters of of larger lots of houses on larger lot sizes. Those are larger than the twenty-five by one hundred lot. This lot in particular is four thousand square feet, a forty by one hundred, something like that. You can see it here from some aerial photos as well. And you see to the left, the the two larger structures that I talked about that are, I think, six-story structures. And then another multifamily that is immediately adjacent to it with that orange roof. We are requesting this as a three-family. The third family, the third dwelling unit is a conditional use in this zone. We think it's warranted. We believe that actually this was a three-family. Hard to tell, but anecdotally from what we've seen forensically in terms of the house itself, some more photos, and then the interior, we were able to get in. But as you can see, it's not in any kind of living condition. A whole portion of the roof that we're proposing to lift and restore is is missing. I think you've seen the determination of significance letter. It's been in the package dated back from June fifth, twenty nineteen, so a little over four years ago. And then again, a letter that we included from Nick Taylor from September twenty eighteen. We do have the tax card from nineteen thirty-eight that pretty much shows the structure as is. It really hasn't been touched, which is kind of amazing in a way that you can see this. And we've been very careful in terms of how we've imagined demolition. So you see here on the screen, a series of 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 continuous lines and dashed lines. The dashed lines are for demolition. And one of the most significant portions for demolition is the roof, which is only partially there to begin with. And then we have, if you could see my mouse, a small addition on the back that will be demolished so that we can actually raise this whole area. So it's modest, but we think it makes the house more livable. Now, in terms of the deviation seeking, we have a D for height. We're proposing four feet of additional height. It's not a massive amount, but at the same time, it is to get that attic space up to a livable per building code height. And then the permitted principal use being that the 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 third fat, the third unit is a conditional use in this zone. That is also a variance in terms of housekeeping stuff, trash removal plan, trash will be stored in the house, moved out to the street on days of collection. You see the proposed site plan here. We do have a driveway now in the R one F. Parking is meant to be in the rear of the structure. We do have three parking spaces, one for each unit, including one ADA space, which is required, and those fit neatly behind the house as as shown here. That driveway also exists, right? So there's a curb cut for a driveway. The cars pull in. That's the the filled red triangle, and then the just outlined red triangle is the pedestrian entrance onto a stoop. In the in the house, you'll see three units. We have a unit A, which is a nine hundred and forty square foot duplex two-bedroom. Unit B is a nine hundred and eighty-two square foot duplex two-bedroom. And unit C is a very large, almost nineteen hundred square feet, four-bedroom unit with a flex space. Unit C can be this large based on that modest increase in the roof to activate the attic space that, as I said anecdotally, we've seen was always used as a living space. So the way that the plans work and what we have here is a comparison of the existing, which would be on top, and the proposed, which is below. So you see the the coverage of the building in the basement does not change. We rebuild that basement wall where there's a stair. And we have the two units starting in the basement with some bedroom spaces. So units A and B, the two units that are just under a thousand square feet are duplexed units. You would access them on the first floor through the stoop. And so you can see how they're kind of split here, unit A in the front, unit B in the back. And then as we go up to the second floor, this is where the plans change. We're demoing the the smaller, the 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 smaller width addition and proposing a full width addition that you see here. And that goes up to the attic space. And you can see how the attic space, because of the roof being raised, is basically being expanded, not so much in depth, but in width slightly because of the the raise in the roof. And the way that we're defining this, I have this in the IBC twenty twenty-one section. I don't need to necessarily read that, but basically, the IBC International Building Code New Jersey establishes ceiling heights for living spaces. And the ceiling height that we've accomplished here is at its low point, seven feet, two inches. That's on the ends of the gables. And at its high point, nine feet, nine inches, which is a nice tall space. We think it's going to be a fantastic space in in this building for that conditional third unit. And then the roof plan that you see here, it's just a stepped gamel. In terms of the elevation, I put a red that we put a red dashed line in here to show that four foot of additional height that we're asking for to make it clear to the board. It's really not that much. And we're also making the roof slightly less steep, something we spoke about with Ms. O'Neil. She's reviewed all of these plans. You can see the the materials and the colors of those materials that we are proposing also on the left and then in the colored elevations that are below. So this is the front elevation. Again, the window patterning, et cetera, stays the same. The porch and stoop are maintained. The rear elevation has changed a little bit, but we still have that arched window up top. There is no fire escape type stairs anymore. We've gotten rid of those in the rear. And then the side elevations, you actually see that that stepping of the roof is maintained. We just step a little less, and that's because of that attic space that we're we're activating. So you can see here the side elevation in comparison, the other side elevation in comparison. So the window patterning on the sides have changed a little bit. Not so much in the front and the rear. Quick building section, so Um, quick building section, so the board understands the relationship of that basement unit, the two floors in the middle, and then that reactivated attic space. Um, that also occurs in a building section. And then we've provided um some details of the stairs, some historic detailing that will be maintained. Um, that uh we've worked on with the HBO. Um, we're excited about this. Um, we think it's a fairly straightforward project. And um, a nice project, the adaptive reuse component of it is um is exciting. Um, we don't get to do that so much. Um, we're happy to do that here. Um, and uh, and uh, hope the board will agree. Uh, that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Um, I just want to ask you, how? How far below grade is the basement floor?
Let me see, I, I, I can, if you're asking if it meets the legal definition of a basement, it does. Uh, we've checked that. Um, it looks like it is, uh, if I can zoom in here. And that, by the way, that that exists, that basement condition is um maintained as um. As uh where the slab is, uh, it is one foot, four inches below grade. So uh, the definition, the legal definition of a basement is a, is a floor that is um. More than fifty percent above grade, which is the case here.
And that's.
That's it.
I I have no further questions.
Okay, any other? We'll hold up uh board questions. Uh, until we get all your witnesses.
Okay, um. I, I, next witness is our professional planner, Catherine Gregory.
Gregory, do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full names very last.
Catherine Gregory, G R E G O R Y. Business address is ninety-six Linwood Plaza and number three, oh, sorry. Number three fifty Fort Lee, New Jersey.
Thank you, witness this one.
Thank you, uh, Miss Gregory, is your license current?
Right, yes, it is.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Miss Gregory, have you reviewed the plans of uh Row Architects?
Yes, I have. I've also reviewed uh the master plan, the zoning ordinance, um done a site inspection myself. Um, to prepare for this evening.
Excellent, and you've reviewed the uh planning memo of May ninth from the staff.
That is correct, yes, I have.
Yes, thank you. Um, please provide the ben, the board the benefit of your findings.
Uh, certainly, um, in the R one zone, uh, a three-family is a conditionally permitted use. Um, and what I'd like to note is that are, there are nine specific conditions. Uh, for three families that we actually do meet. So we, what we don't meet is actually one of the bulk requirements generally for the zone, and that's the height of Mr. Garber discussed that. Um, at length with you during his testimony. Um, so we have an interesting situation because we're sort of a hybrid conditional use variance, plus we do have that D six height variance. And uh, that's due to the code as Mr. Garber explained. So when we talk about a conditional use variance, usually there's a a lightened burden. Uh, for that conditional use. Um, and what we really focus on is the negative criteria. Uh, but in the case of a D six variance, we do have to prove both the positive and the negative criteria. Um, so with the height variance, um, as he said, we are four foot more than what is permitted in the zone. Um, so therefore, that's why we need a D six variant. There's a case that guides the D six variance, and that's the grass over spring leg heights. Um, and basically what that said is that um. A special reasons could be proven. Excuse me. Special reasons could be proven. If uh the height was consistent basically with the neighborhood. Um, and this is where I'd like to share my screen, if I will, um, actually going to bring you to um the staff memo. Because I think that a picture is worth a thousand words. So um, bring it up here if everyone can see. Um, on the staff memo, um, obviously our site is outlined in red. And what you'll see to the left of our building is a brand new uh multi, uh, single or multifamily building. I'm not quite sure which. Uh, however, you can see that right now that is actually taller than our existing structure. Um, so when we raise this up, that extra four feet, we're going to be just about the same height as this, the structure that's next door. Um, so when we talk about compatibility with the neighborhood, um, I believe that we're going to be compatible with not only the building next door. Um, but also the surrounding neighborhood, as Mr. Garber indicated. When you go further to the left, there are four and a half story multifamily buildings that are also located right along the street. Um, out of abundance of caution, we'd also like to ask for a number of stories variants. That was the last thing that was discussed by Mr. Garber. Um, we are asking for four stories, where three stories is permitted. Um, as you can see, our basement is not very deep. Um, it's only one and a half feet below the grade plane, so we basically have a very large base of the building. So it really reads more like two and a half stories on a base. Um, I don't think it reads as four stories at all. Uh, based on the architecture that we've proposed. Um, so I think that that also can be granted. Um, so those are really the variances that we're asking for, and in terms of the positive criteria or the special reasons. Um, I believe that we promote a few the purposes of the municipal land use law. Purpose A, which talks about providing the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. We're obviously taking a dilapidated structure and bringing it back to its historical glory. Also, purpose I, which talks about promotion of a desirable visual environment, which would be the same reasoning for purpose A. Um, and also purpose J, which talks about promotion of the conservation of historic sites and districts. Exactly what we're doing here. We're trying to keep the historical integrity of this house that was built probably in the eighteen sixties. Um, so therefore, I do believe we meet the positive criteria for granting a D six variance. In terms of the negative criteria, I don't believe there's any substantial duction to the public good by allowing the increase in height. Um, I also believe there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Uh, Mr. Garber read you the actual purpose of the zone before. Um, and I do believe that we need that, um, and that's preserving the pattern quality and architectural individuality of the existing. Uh, homes in the neighborhood, um, and I believe that we are doing that here. Uh, and we also um meet a few of the objectives of the Jersey City Master Plan. Uh, one of which would be to continue efforts to stabilize and upgrade residential neighborhoods. So simply in conclusion, I believe that we do meet both the positive and the negative criteria for the granting. Of a D six height variance and a conditional use variance potentially for the number of stories uh associated with this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Gregory.
And I'll stop sharing my screen right now.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Uh, any other witnesses?
Uh, unless the board has questioned, specific engineering questions, um. We could conclude with Miss Gregory's testimony.
Would the board like to uh question at this time or wait until uh after public comment? Anyone want to ask a question? Okay, I think we'll. Continue. Ms. Carter?
Oh, yes, um.
Continue with your next witness.
Oh, I, I was only going to uh put uh. Mr. Rayman up, if the board had any specific engineering questions.
That way, I think Mr. Garber. Covered everything.
Okay.
Sound good. Uh, is there a public, Francisco, wherever you are?
Uh, I don't see anyone's hands raised at this time.
Okay. Do we have uh any uh comments? From? Our, our side, the city side. Uh, a report?
Uh, I'll be really brief. I think uh, Miss Gregory covered pretty much. A lot of what my staff memo was saying, but I do want to just focus on the uh staff recommended conditions. Um, so one, all materials and color selections shall be shown on final plans. Uh, no change to the facade, site design, including materials, as well as any changes that may be required. By the Office of Construction Code, um. Uh, shall be permitted without consultation with planning staff and approval by the zoning board. Um, applicant. This is the second one. Applicant shall provide an affidavit from the architect of record uh representing that the constructed project. Is consistent with the final approved plans. Uh, three, the applicant shall coordinate with the Division of St. Forest. Before placing the uh, the curved street tree. Um, all street trees. Uh, and landscaping shall be installed in accordance with the Jersey City Forestry Standards. Um, prior to obtaining a. Certificate of occupancy or temporary certificate of occupancy. Um, number five, a copy of the memorialized resolution with amended deed shall be filed with the Hudson County Register's Office. Um, and lastly, number six, the applicant shall comply with all conditions stated in the Historic Preservation Memo. Uh, issued by Maggie and David.
Wait, go out there and do that, Mountain.
Um, and that's pretty much it. With that said, um, staff is in support with the conditions I just mentioned.
Okay, uh. Ms. Carter, you're good with those conditions?
Uh, yes, we are.
Okay, uh, board, any questions, commissioners? Okay, commissioners, yeah, do we, we have a?
I like, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve K Z twenty-three dash zero two zero as presented to the board this evening.
I second the motion.
Okay, we're probably moving second it. Can we get a roll call?
And once I, I did hear this is a Z twenty-two dash zero two zero. I thought I heard a Z twenty-three.
Oh, okay, you know what? I did say, I I apologize. Okay. For the record, I like to, Mr. Chairman, I like to make a motion to approve K Z twenty-two. There's zero two zero as approved to the board this evening.
We'll get that second again?
Um, second.
Okay, so we're probably moving the second it, uh, can we get a roll call?
Motion to approve with conditions, Commissioner Shadine?
Yes.
I, I don't hear you. I'm sorry, me? Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And I think you're in green.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you.
Everyone have a good night. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to uh. Case fourteen. That's uh Z twenty dash oh five four. The address is thirty-eight dash forty Grace Street.
Promoting.
Okay. Okay. Mr. McCann, welcome.
Evening, everybody.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good. My name is Jim McCann, for the record, from the Law Firm of Connefolly in Jersey City. On behalf of the applicant, um. Francisco, I have two witnesses. Um, one is Ed Colling, who I know you're very familiar with. The other. Uh, I, the, I actually have two other witnesses, my architectural team, and I think you'll find them under Mr. Raj. Sohku, S O O K H U.
And is there anyone else? I do see another, I'm not sure if that's part of your team.
Uh, I don't, I believe it's just those two, Mr. Raj Sohku and Ed Colling.
I'm gonna promote. Some, someone who's raising their hand, just in case they're questioning an item that has been carried, and then we'll jump back into it.
Sure.
Hello.
Do you have a camera that you can activate?
Uh, yes, but I just have a question regarding one of the future cases. Um, is it something that you would be able to answer?
Yes, which one?
Which one? If we adjourned it, what's the case?
Uh, K Z twenty-two zero five three.
What's the address?
Uh, it's eighty-eight Highway one thirty-nine.
Yeah, that has been carried.
That's on for June twenty-nine.
June twenty-nine, okay, sorry, that's the only question I had.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Jim, before we proceed, this is, you have properly noticed this uh. This case, we have reviewed your affidavit, your proof of service, notice of publication, and Iris, there you are up there. We're gonna mark this as A one for this application.
Uh, A one is received and marked.
Thank you, Vinnie, appreciate that. Um, so uh, w- we are here on case Z twenty dash zero fifty-four. Um, the property that we're going to discuss tonight is is uh owned and the applicant is Mr. Jack Biancamano. Um, the property is uh block five oh four, lots thirty-seven and thirty-eight, it's two lots. Uh, commonly known as thirty-eight Grace, thirty-eight forty Gray Street, which are, which is located between Central Ave. And Summit Ave in the Heights. Um, property is located in the R one zoning district, that's the one and two family housing district. Um, now, the property that we're gonna talk about is um. It's currently improved with a three-family home. Uh, with the basement. With the driveway and a four-space detached parking garage. Those improvements are all already there. Um, as the building stands today, it is a pre-exist non-conforming use.
I'm sorry, Mr. McCann, I'm hearing some background noise, I think, Mr. Patel, your microphone, there you go, thank you. Please proceed, thank you.
Okay, um, the proposal tonight is very simple. Um, the applicant is requesting the board's permission to create. Uh, to convert the existing basement. Into a basement apartment. Uh, it would be a studio apartment that is five hundred and ninety square feet. Um, the applicant is also um committed to making a series of site improvements to the property. Um, some on the property and some on the streetscape. Uh, which we believe would be some nice community benefits. Uh, if the board sees to uh grant us the relief requested tonight. Uh, now, the relief requested is uh is a request for a D two variance. Uh, because we are expanding an existing non-conforming use. Uh, that's the three-family. If the board gives us permission to. Uh, convert the basement to a, to a unit, that would make this a four-family dwelling. Uh, the other uh variance relief that's requested is. Um, in this zone, the minimum uh floor-to-ceiling height for a basement is nine feet. Um, and the applicant is requesting uh permission to have the basement. Uh, unit be seven feet, three inches. Uh, now, just one or two points. Uh, you're gonna hear some testimony from Ed Cog, Ed Colling, our planner. And uh, we believe that this site is particularly suited to um become a four-family. Uh, because one, uh, it's two lots. Uh, so it's, you'll hear testimony that the lot is four hundred, uh, forty-five hundred square feet. Um, as I mentioned, you'll hear testimony that the property already has. On it, a detached parking garage that can hold four spaces. Uh, that has four spaces. So if the board were to grant this variance, uh, there would be four units. And four parking spaces, which is still in compliance with the R one district uh parking requirements. Um. Uh, finally, uh, and and for those reasons, we don't believe there would be any benefit on the surrounding community. If the board were to grant this, uh, grant this relief, because there's no parking. Uh, and the applicant is making some site improvements that we believe will be community benefits. Um, so that's just a little summation. I have um three witnesses. The project architect uh is Mr. Ed Cogling. Uh, and Co- Coghlin, and I will call him as my first witness. Uh, he prepared the plans that we're gonna present to you tonight. Uh, also, I'm gonna ask the board for a courtesy. Mr. Coghlin is going to be assisted in his presentation. By his designer, who is a gentleman named Mr. Raj Sohku. So we would appreciate it if the board would allow, I I will introduce Mr. Colling and have him Coghlin and discuss his plans, but then the. Majority of his presentation, we, we hope can be done by his assistant. Um. So, go ahead.
Mr. Coghlin? If I can, if you can please raise your right hand, I will swear you in, please, before your testimony. Do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name and spell your last.
All right, it's, uh, actually Charles Edward Coghlin. AIA, it's American Institute of Architects.
And Mr. Uh, Coghlin, please spell your last name for me, it's very close to.
C O U G H L I N.
Okay, thank you. The witness is sworn, please proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Coghlin, are you a New Jersey licensed architect?
Yes, I am.
And is your license currently in good standing?
Yes, it is.
And have you during the course of?
The last forty years.
Forty years. Have you, in the course of your forty year career, prepared, uh, 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 plans for zoning and, uh, and planning boards?
Yes.
And have you testified before zoning and planning boards as a architect, as an expert in the field of architecture?
Yes.
And have you testified in Jersey City before?
Oh, many times.
Okay, some time ago, though, right?
Uh, yes, while ago, yes.
Okay, and, um, I'm gonna, um, put the plans up on the screen, I'm gonna share my screen if I can. Um. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mr. Coghlin, um, did you prepare, prepare, prepare the architectural plans? That we're presenting to the board tonight?
Yes.
And the plans that are on the screen, can you identify those as the plans that, uh, are yours that we're presenting?
Yes.
And, um, so the totality of those plans is A or A one through A four, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and, um, those plans have a zoning chart, uh, in, in conjunction with myself and, uh, Mr. Ed Colling. The professional planner in this, did you prepare the zoning chart that's, uh, on A one?
Yes, yes.
And on that zoning chart, uh, we list two variances that we need. One is an expansion of a non-conforming use, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the other is the floor to ceiling height variance, which the requirement is nine feet and we're, we're proposing seven feet, three inches, correct?
That's correct.
And other than that, everything else on the chart complies with the, uh, R one zoning, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Mr. Coghlin, you've been assisted during your career by your designer, Mr. Raj Sookhu, is that correct?
That's correct.
And did he assist you with this project too?
Yes, he was a major part of it.
Uh, and, um, is he familiar with the plans that you prepared?
Yes.
And are you asking the board tonight to, uh, to allow him to continue the presentation on your behalf for the, for the facts? And the information that's on the plans?
Yes, please.
Um, uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if it's okay with you, I'd like to, um, have Mr. Sookhu continue the presentation. Oh, and I'd like to, you'd accept Mr. Coghlin's arch- uh, architectural qualifications, I forgot to think.
Yes, we accept his qualification.
Commit it for that.
Well, thank you very much.
And Mr. Sookhu, if you raise your red hand, please, I will swear you in. Do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last for me.
Raj Sookhu, S O O K H U.
Thank you. When you address, Mr. Sookhu, is business address?
Sixteen twenty four Plainfield Avenue, South Plainfield, New Jersey, zero seven zero eight zero.
Hey, thank you. This is one, please proceed.
Thank you.
Mr. Sookhu, are you, uh, Mr. Coghlin's designer?
Yes, I am.
And, and you, did you work with him under his license in the preparation of the plans that are before the board tonight?
Yes.
And how long have you been, uh, Mr. Coghlin's designer?
Uh, twenty plus years.
Okay, and, um. As part of your duties for this project, did you review the plans in detail?
Yes.
Uh, and did you visit the site?
I, I have, yes.
And have you inspected the interior of the property?
I did.
And did you walk the exterior of the site?
I did.
And have you reviewed the survey for the property?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Um, based upon all the information that you've gathered and Mr. Coghlin's plans. Uh, can you tell us what the size of this property is, the square footage?
Four thousand five hundred square feet, measuring a hundred by forty five.
And it's actually two lots, right? It's lot thirty seven and thirty eight?
That's correct.
Okay, and, uh, could you also tell the board, um. Well, what, well, let's, let's go to, uh, let's go to, is this, this is A two of the plans. And board members, just so you know, these plans were filed with the planning division, uh, several months ago. They are posted on the web portal. Um, and I don't have any other exhibits other than the plans, so that's what we're going to be discussing. Um, so, Mr. Sookhu, we're looking at A two, I believe. Um, can you tell, can tell us what, what this plan represents and what is actually at the site? Um, right now.
Uh, right now, there is a, there is a three-story building with three residential units. All of which are two-bedroom units. There is a basement that is partially finished along the, uh, common area and the laundry area. There is also a single-story detached garage with four spaces.
Okay, and so on A two, that is a plan that Mr. Coghlin prepared. For floors one, two, and three of the existing improvement, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And if we go back to A one. Um, uh, where my, where the hand is floating around, that's the, uh, a representation of the existing site. And the, there's a picture of the building on the, on the left, correct?
That's correct.
And you're making reference to the four-car, you made reference to the, uh, four-car garage that's at the rear of the property?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and let's go back to A two and on the right side of the screen. This is the proposal that we have for the basement apartment, is that correct?
That's right.
All right, and could you explain to the board, um, what Mr. Coghlin's plans show for the proposed basement apartment?
We're looking to, uh, convert the interior portion of the unfinished basement into a studio apartment. That would be approximately, uh, would be five hundred and ninety square feet. With a living area, a bathroom with a shower and a kitchen area. The existing laundry room, boiler and boiler rooms shall remain, those are the, uh, common areas. And if you'd like to discuss access?
Yeah, so let's just, I just forgot, let's orient the board, the, uh, the top of the screen where my hand is, that's the front of the property, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so go ahead, explain, uh, the points of access to the board, if you would.
So if you would move your mouse to the, right there, okay, so those. So it accesses to, to this basement apartment is via the internal main stair staircase from the ground floor. And from a side entrance off of the driveway. At the lower right-hand corner, exactly where you're pointing. We also added an egress window at the top of the plan where you are there in the event of emergency.
And so the purpose of those egresses is to comply with building code and fire code, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the square, the approximate square footage of the, of the, uh, basement unit that's being proposed is five hundred and ninety square feet, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, what's the ceiling height that we're proposing, Mr. Sookhu?
Seven feet, three inches.
Okay, and does that also meet, uh, building and construction code?
For a basement apartment, it does.
Okay, and is the minimum seven feet?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, now, Mr. Sookhu, um, the applicant is also proposing to make a series of. Exterior renovations to the site. Um, uh. Let's go through those and let's start with, uh, A one. And start with the items that are going to be removed or the conditions that are gonna be removed from the site. Um, as part of this application. Um, and we'll start down at the bottom of the screen by Gray Street.
Okay.
And can you take us through the red areas and tell us what that represents?
Sure, so at, at the bottom of the plan there, we're removing the wall and gate in front of the building that encroaches into the sidewalk. We are installing a tree and tree pit in front of the building. We are reducing the driveway curb cut width from twelve feet to ten feet. We're also removing the chain link fence along the southerly property line adjacent to the driveway entrance. We're removing the sixteen point six foot gate at the front of the driveway, at the foot of driveway. We are removing a section of the driveway along the southerly side of the house to install a planting bed. Measuring four feet wide by thirty six feet long with a twelve-inch-high decorative wall.
And, and Mr. Sookhu, that planting bed is shown on the proposed site plan, correct?
That's correct.
Where, where the cursor is now?
That's correct.
As is the proposed tree?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then on the far right of the screen is, are the plant materials. Um, that are proposed for the planting bed, correct?
Right.
Okay, um, did you mention the decorative walls? I missed it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, um. Uh, did I miss anything else?
Right where your, your cursor is, at that portion right there, we're removing. The, uh, chain link fence by the side entrance of the house and installing a twelve-inch decorative wall. With a thirty-four-inch-high decorative metal fence.
Uh. Um. This driveway is already fully paved, that's shown on the screen?
Partially.
Partially, so, so it's going to be fully paved as part of this application, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then are there be improvements being made around the, uh, four-car garage?
Yes, so around the, the garage. We've installed a rain garden around the perimeter of the garage on three sides. It measures three feet wide by eighty-five feet long. Those.
Okay, those are the, the, those are the exterior improvements that we propose for the site, correct?
Correct.
All right, um. Board members, I have no more questions for Mr. Coghlin or Mr. Sookhu, um, but happy to answer questions if the board has, has any.
Board. If there are no questions at this time, board, we can hold our questions. Uh, does anyone have any questions, board? Okay, seeing none, will, uh, your witnesses, you're, you're good?
Uh, my next witness is Mr. Ed Colling, our, our planner.
Very good. You promote? Mr. Colling.
I'm, uh, I'm on the screen now.
Yes, there we go. Mr. McCann, if there, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I could see everybody. Mr. Colling, do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last.
My, uh, first name is Edward, the last name is Colling, spelled K O L L I N G. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. Uh, my license and certification are current, uh, up to date and in full order.
We, we accept your qualifications, thank you.
Yes, there we go.
Uh, so, Mr. Colling, we've, um, wha- what did you do to prepare for tonight's hearing, Mr. Colling? Well, I have, uh, reviewed the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance as well as the, uh, new master plan. Uh, land element that was prepared by the, so, Jersey City, uh, Division of City Planning. I have, uh, visited the site, uh, reviewed the plans, uh, reviewed the municipal land use law. Uh, and, and we have had, uh, a couple of the. Team meetings where we've discussed the project among the, uh, the professionals. And, uh, so I would get a more full understanding of the application. And, um, and, and we have two variances that we need, one of them is an expansion of a non-conforming. Use, that's a D two variance, can you run us through the reasons why we believe? That we can meet the standard, uh, for granting that variance for this project? Certainly, and the, um. The reason, the, the, and that's really the primary reason why we're here, because that's the only D variance that, that we have. Uh, a D two variance is for an expansion of a non-conforming use. So typically, that type of variance, the proofs are a little less stringent than if we were, um. Asking for a brand-new use variance for something that's not permitted in the zone. In this case, the building already exists, there's already three families, it's already on an unders- oversized lot. Um, so, in this, this case, there's case law where even just the, an aesthetic improvement is some kind, sometimes. Considered to be, uh, sufficient proof. Um, and then, again, as I mentioned, in this case, it's already a three-family, it is an oversized lot. Um, and I think that, oh, goes to the idea of why this property is particularly well-suited for the, uh. The addition of the, the, the small unit. Uh, the building is not being expanded in any way. The height's not being increased, the setbacks are not being reduced, building coverage is not being increased. So there is really no additional physical impacts whatsoever. Um, no impacts on the adjoining properties, all the setbacks and everything will remain the same. Uh, as the attorney mentioned, as you mentioned, Jim, project is in the Heights on Gray Street. Which is about, uh, three blocks from the Union City border, just to give the board an idea of exactly where this is. Um, the character of this street, if you were looking at the side of the street where the building is on, uh, there's nineteen properties. And eight of them are already multifamily homes, there's six three families, there's two fam- uh, two, four families and three, three families. And they all exist on twenty-five by a hundred lots, so this being the only oversized lot, I think, again, goes. To demonstrate that this property is particularly well-suited. And it's also particularly well-suited because it fits into the character of the area, almost half the, the buildings on this, uh, block are already multifamilies. In terms of the master plan, the, the master plan that the, uh, planning board looked at. They looked at the, uh, R one provisions and, and one of the things that they, uh, suggested. Was that they were recognized, was that there's a demand for, uh, other housing options other than simply one and two family homes. Um, they also recognize that there's, there's a demand for some, uh, smaller, uh, smaller units. Because inherently, a smaller unit is less, less expensive, so you need to have some units that are larger. Like you'd find in a one and two-family home, and you also need to have units that meet that demand for the smaller units. And that's what this property, uh, really does. Um, they, they also recognize that the R one district covers like most of the city, really. It's the largest zoning district by, by far. Um, but because it's restrictive of permitting only mostly one and two-family homes, you don't get much variety. So they've made recommendations, but maybe that, that should be modified somewhat to vary the types of housing, to add more flexibility. And to be able to, to create some of these, uh, s- smaller, smaller units. Um, more recently, in fact, just two days ago. The City Planning Division, um, presented some amendments to the, or, or one zone to the planning board. And the planning board accepted them and sent them on to the city council. And those amendments actually, uh, would allow for what they called simply a residential use. So instead of saying one and two-family, they used the category just called residential. They also created a density of forty-two units an acre, which is slightly higher than a one and two-family home on a twenty-five by a hundred lot. And the reason for that was to allow for some flexibility on larger lots, to allow for multi, multifamilies. And this property would fit right in, in fact, if this property, if the amendments are adopted. We wouldn't need a density variance, we wouldn't be considered a non-conforming use. We might not even be before the zoning board at all, we probably would be at the planning board if we had a, a, a minor site plan or something like that. Or if he did come to the zoning board, there would simply be C variances. So I think this project is really perfectly consistent with what the city's, you know, current planning ideas are. For this. with what the city's, you know, current planning ideas are for this type of uh of a residential zone. If you look at the positive criteria, we're making significant site improvements. There's the the street tree, reducing the size of the driveway cut. Additional landscaping along the uh the side, the uh rain garden in in the rear, um, the uh electrical vehicle uh uh charging stations, these are all beneficial aspects of the project. Uh, and there's really no negatives because the building is not being being expanded. The parking it provided is is one to one. Um, so there's really no sub- substantial detriment or any detriment at all. So I think that we've met the our uh our positive criteria. We also promote certain aspects of the municipal land use law. Um, we we be by by promoting the rapid recommendations of the master plan. Uh, we are really uh promoting the public health, safety and welfare, which is subparagraph two A. Adequate air light, open space is being promoted because none of that is being changed by this application. Uh, the the project is uh property is uh oversized uh forty five hundred square feet. So I think that we're have a sufficient space in an appropriate location for this use. Uh, and then is the aesthetic improvements that we just enumerated as well. So I think you can grant the variances because we have um we've met the positive criteria and there are there are there are no negatives as I've already gone over. Um, the C variance is simply for the height of the um the first the the basement apartment, really. And that's a an existing condition. To try to increase that, to jack the house up would be uh uh unreasonable and would create a hardship and practical difficulties uh as the architect has testified to. Uh, although we don't need to meet the zoning height uh for a sorry, we do meet all construction code, building code, fire safety codes. So the the unit is uh is perfectly habitable, perfectly safe and provides a n- a nicely sized studio apartment uh in the neighborhood that uh I think could could use a variety of housing types. And so therefore, I think that we've met the positive criteria for the C variance as well. And that concludes my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Colling. Uh, I apologize to the board. The the plans that are filed do show that there are two electric vehicle stations in the garage. They're clearly set forth on the plans. And there are also bicycle racks in the back of the garage and behind the building. They're also clearly set forth on the plan. So if it, I'm not going to bring the plans back up. Um, because they're clearly shown, but those those other things are there. Uh, having said that, uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Uh, if there are no questions from the board at this time, we can reserve our questions for uh after we hear from uh public comment. Are there any hands raised?
At this time, I see no hands raised.
Okay. Uh, can we get the uh board?
How do we close the public first so we don't go back?
We're gonna just close that out. Uh, and if we have staff comments. You share the staff comments with us?
Hi, good evening, board. Um. Cameron, I'll be providing staff comments tonight. Um, so planning staff agrees with the professional planning testimony provided by Mr. Colling. Um, and yeah, I I'm not going to go over anything that he already touched upon because um he went over it with exceptional detail and planning staff completely agrees. Um, the only thing I just wanted to add was obviously what comes to mind when you hear a basement unit, um, you know, you worry about light in that unit. And I can just say from doing site visits and, you know, looking at those basement windows, they are actually very sizable windows. Um, so planning staff believes that the unit would be, um, you know, a a a well lit um, unit and it would be um. Yeah, it it would be appealing. Um, and I think beyond that, um, staff is just going to ask that the applicant's attorney agree to the four conditions. In the staff memo, their standard conditions, uh, that staff memo stated today's date, June fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Mr. McCann, are those conditions acceptable?
Yes, I've risked uh board members have re- received Cameron's staff memo. Um, I've reviewed uh, conditions one through four and the applicant agrees to them. I think there's one other thing. Uh, Cameron had it some time ago. Cameron, you mentioned that the tree that you that we proposed on our plans in front of the building that you wanted to take a look at and possibly change the type of tree. And I would stipulate for the board that we will work with Cameron to put whatever tree he sees fit in in front of the property. Having said that, I think that concludes that question.
Okay, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I I did look at that again and um yeah, I saw it's a red maple which um, you know, uh, it's a native species and it would likely thrive in this uh location. And it uh is actually one of the species that the city forester said is easy to maintain under power lines. So I think it's a versatile tree and it would it would suffice here. Um, so I think we can keep that and um, yeah, anyway, I I think I've already talked more than I wanted to.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Recommends approval.
There any questions from the commissioners? Commissioners?
No.
Okay, no questions. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve K Z two zero dash zero five four as presented to the board this evening.
I second.
Second, it's been probably moved in second to uh accept the case Z twenty dash oh fifty four at the thirty eight dash forty Gray Street. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel? One, one more time, Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Arugio?
Yes.
And lastly, Commissioner Green, Acting Chair, Commissioner Green.
Yes.
And motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Have a good uh congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. Very much appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know whether he hears.
Uh, we'll we'll move to uh the next case, case number fifteen. Z twenty three dash oh twenty three. Uh, the address is two twenty Broadway. Promote those.
Promoting Chris Murphy.
Evening, Mr. Murphy.
Good evening, Commissioner. For the record, uh, Chris Murphy here on behalf of applicant um with law firm at Murphy, Scheller and Wilkes. Um, we're here tonight seeking a deed one use variance uh in connection with the operation of a class five cannabis retail facility. Be located at two twenty uh Broadway. The property in question is located in the industrial zoning district. Um, this is a unique application. We're we're here tonight on um a use variance only. We're not seeking any further relief. And there's no bulk variance relief being sought. Um, we're not seeking preliminary and final site plan approval as the project is exempt um under Jersey City zoning ordinance. Um, it's a it's a retail space under forty five hundred square feet. There are no improvements being proposed to the property. Either exterior or interior. Um, importantly, the applicant has already uh been approved to operate a medical cannabis dispensary at this location. Um, we've obtained Jersey City Cannabis Control Board approval on October seventeenth, two thousand twenty two to operate this facility for both medical and retail use. Um, on May tenth, two thousand twenty three, um, just last month, the Jersey City Council adopted a resolution of local support for this project um as well. I I have two witnesses uh here to testify this evening. Um, the first um, being John Jonathan Bednarsh, who's who's the applicant. And then we have our professional planner, uh, Charles Height. Um, so if I may.
Before you start, you know, we did carry this from May twenty fifth with preservation of notices and I'm not so sure we marked them. But we have reviewed your affidavit, proof of service, notice of public agent. And Iris will mark that as A one for this application.
A one is marked.
Great, thank you, counselor. We do have Jonathan Bednarsh. I I see him on the line. Jonathan, if you can unmute yourself, we'll get you sworn in. Um, and then you can proceed. I'm sorry.
So please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last for me.
Jonathan Bednarsh, B as in boy, E D, N as in Nancy, A R S H.
Thank you, and your addresses, please.
Uh, ninety four Ridge Road, Rumsen, New Jersey.
If you witness this word.
Thank you, thank you, commissioners. Um, Jonathan, we're not, we're not swearing you in as an expert, so we don't have to qualify you. Um, we're gonna have you uh provide some an overview of the company, overview of the operations. Tell the board how we got to this point. I know it's been a long journey for us and and this is the final, the final step. So why don't you you give an overview to the board and then we can answer any questions that they have?
Sounds good. Uh, good evening, commissioners. Uh, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak about our business that we're opening at two twenty Broadway. Um, our company, Community Wellness Center, which is also known as Rip Dispensary, was founded by myself and my partner over five years ago uh to create a medical and retail cannabis company focused on having a meaningful, positive impact um on our local New Jersey community. We're locally owned and operated by New Jersey residents and staff with a diverse team uh from New Jersey. So back in twenty nineteen, we applied to the state of New Jersey for one of thirty available medical cannabis dispensary licenses that were to be awarded in a very highly competitive application process. So out of hundreds of applicants, um, we succeeded in achieving the highest score in the northern region of New Jersey. Um, where the state evaluated our our many page applications for operational capabilities, safety and security, community impact, um diversity and social equity. So in December twenty twenty one, they finally awarded the licenses and we were awarded a license to operate a medical dispensary here in Jersey City. So we selected this site at two twenty Broadway for a few key reasons. Um, first, it was an existing retail use there uh which met the local Jersey City zoning requirements that were in effect at the time governing medical cannabis dispensaries. Um, if if those of you that noted the location, it's it's uh on a very highly accessible um area of Route one and nine and four forty. So uh to make it easy for our patients and customers to be able to get to us, and there's a lot of parking on site. Um, it also met all the state and local requirements for distances from s- uh sensitive areas like schools, for example, where we're over a thousand feet from the closest school. Um, and it also only needed an in- interior renovation. There was no other work that was required. So um, on October fifth, twenty twenty two, we received a positive zoning determination from the zoning office here in Jersey City to open a medical cannabis cannabis dispensary at the location. Uh, so we pulled our burn building permits on March first, twenty twenty three. And over the next two months, we completed our interior fit out. Uh, so on May twelfth of this year, uh, just a few weeks ago, we passed all our final building inspections. And then finally, on May sixteenth, we passed our final state inspections, which are performed by the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission, um, which included a very comprehensive review of our build out to ensure that we met all of the requirements that New Jersey has to operate uh dispensary, which includes safety and security, twenty four by seven uh video monitoring and alarm systems, procedures to make sure that only adults can come in, um, secure vault for storage and and many other things like that. So with all those inspections and everything done, um, I'm very excited that we're on track to open our doors to begin serving Jersey City medical patients um in the first couple of weeks of July. So in parallel with that whole process, in twenty twenty two, New Jersey started to license um businesses to open adult use or they're called recreational cannabis dispensaries, um, which in this area are known as class five retail dispensaries. Because we already are a licensed medical dispensary operator, we're different than a lot of the new, all those new businesses that are trying to get these retail class five licenses that you may have heard about and that the city's been dealing with. Um, the regulations to operate a medical dispensary are much more stringent um than just a a class five, so that we don't have to reapply to the state to add class five. All we need to do is we need to fill out some paperwork um with the state that shows that we're always going to prioritize medical patients and that we have municipal support to include this in our in our license. So um, as Chris mentioned, on October seventeenth, we went before the Jersey City Cannabis Control Board and presented our plans, um, including our extensive involvement in the community over the last five years and our community and workforce development plans um going forward, and we received their approval on that night. Um, on May tenth, we received a resolution of support from the city council to operate our class five dispensary at two twenty Broadway. And then earlier this week, we actually submitted our um class five retail paperwork to the New Jersey Cannabis uh Regulatory Commission. And we anticipate that the commission will grant that approval on their July eighteenth board meeting coming up. So just to be clear um to everyone, when we say we're expanding to include class five retail, it really just refers to state licensing um definitions. We don't need to make a single physical change to our facility whatsoever to accommodate this. Um, the build out that we've already done and that we're already about to open fully satisfies all state and local requirements and operational requirements for both a medical and a class five retail uh recreational dispensary. Um, so that's, I just wanted to give you that background. We thought it might be helpful. Um, we're really excited to be able to present this to you tonight. It's been, as Chris mentioned, a very long five-year journey to get here. And we're really looking forward to the opportunity to serve uh the Jersey City community. And and so just wanted to thank you for your time and consideration and and we'd happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jonathan. I I chair green. I have no further questions for this witness.
Thank you.
Would you like us to proceed to our next uh our next witness? Okay, uh, Charles Height, our professional planner?
Good evening.
Hello.
There you are, sorry. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your full names, spell your last and your address, please.
Yes, Charles Height. Last name is spelled H E Y D T. Business address at one Evertrust Plaza, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you. This is one.
Thank you, um. Uh, Chair Green and and uh Counselor, uh, Mr. Height has presented this board, I I believe, a few times.
Yes, he's he's well qualified and we accept his qualifications.
Thank you so much. Miss, Mr. Height, you you've reviewed the Jersey City zoning ordinance. You've reviewed um the plan, the the operational plan as it relates to this facility. Um, can you present some testimony related to the D one variance, touching on both the positive and the negative criteria?
Yes, I'd be happy to, and um I am in good standing as a professional planner in the state. Um, I'd always like to confirm that.
Thank you.
So.
I didn't want to insult you, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's uh it's unhappy to do so. Um. With this application, it is, it is a bit of an interesting um zoning uh situation that we find ourselves in. Um, at this current point in time, um, we have an existing medical cannabis use. Um, however, to expand that and and uh transition that into an adult use or a cannabis retailer by the city's definition, um, we require a a use variance because of the zone we're in, which is the industrial district. Part of that uh process is requesting a use variance. I'll walk the board a few factual details as it relates to the site um in terms of the particular suitability. First and foremost, this property does uh have two parcels uh involved in it. Um, the main lot where the uh principal structure is um is uh point eight three acres. Uh, and the secondary lot where there's auxiliary parking. and the secondary lot where there's auxiliary parking is point three-three acres, so a total of one point one-six acres. It is improved with a mixed-use commercial industrial building. Currently, from the front along Broadway, you see a checkcashing business and what was a furniture retail space, whereas this applicant's going. And in the rear, there's a warehouse and other industrial-related uses. But this particular application is going to be occupying approximately four thousand four hundred and sixty-five square feet of the existing structure. There is parking available on site. I'll get into some of that in a bit. But from an existing condition standpoint, the board should also know that the retail use that was pre-existing, the furniture business that was pre-existing, the retail furniture business, was granted a use variance when it opened. Give me one minute. In, I believe, the nineteen eighties. So that has some historical significance because at one point in time, nineteen eighty-seven, at one point in time, a retail use was granted for this location, and we're coming back to this board for a specific type of retail use, a cannabis retailer, and requesting similar D-one use variants. We did review the application in context of what would be the applicable zoning that regulates cannabis retailers, classified cannabis retailers, which are permitted in other districts throughout the city, but not specifically in the industrial district. So first and foremost, in terms of the property's particular suitability, there's an existing building that we're venting, that we're retrofitting or has been already retrofitted for cannabis use. It is in appropriate location, not, not, moreover than what Mr. Bednarsh mentioned in terms of the access with highways and easy access for the greater area, but specifically with distances from what the city requires from schools and other cannabis uses. So these separation requirements are part of the cannabis ordinance. And I'll just run through them. A minimum of two hundred feet from any school, a minimum of six hundred feet from any other cannabis retailer. And as Mr. Bednarsh mentioned, with respect to the state process, we are within one that with outside of one thousand feet from any drug-free school zone. So it doesn't need that extra separation distance at the state level. In, for cannabis retailer uses, the bulk requirements do defer to the underlying zoning that is referenced. So in this instance, we would look to apply similar standards from whether it be the highway commercial district or neighborhood commercial district. And it's an existing structure, so we're not increasing that. We're not dealing with any bulk issues. But from a parking standpoint, we did do that evaluation. What's being contemplated in the lease right is, and Chris, you can correct me if this is inaccurate, but I believe there's fourteen spaces within the lease agreement for this retailer. And that will do two things. One, comply with any parking requirements, but moreover, comply with the anticipated parking demand for this cannabis retailer. Other than that, I do find that this meets the positive criteria of particular suitability because of its existing conditions, its size, availability of parking, its location. We are also furthering purposes of the municipal land use law. One, to guide appropriate development throughout the state of New Jersey. This is an appropriate location for a cannabis retailer, notwithstanding the use variance, and I'll get into that in a moment. But also to provide sufficient space for appropriate uses throughout the state. This is an underserved area. It's, that's a testament to the proximity to other cannabis uses being outside that six hundred feet. So it is an underserved area, and that locating a cannabis retailer in this location would serve the local community. Transitioning into the negative criteria is where it gets a bit interesting for this application. And with respect to any substantial detriment to the general welfare, we did take a look through all the plans that Mr. Bednarsh provided with respect to the medical facility. They meet all the intent of regulating impacts related to this cannabis use, whether it's adult or medical. Just to run through a few with respect to security, with respect to odor, with respect to operations, and the details go on from there. But all of those issues are dealt with specific requirements, both for the medical facility as well as the cannabis facility, and they go hand-in-hand with reducing the impact on the surrounding community. So I do believe the proposed cannabis retailer is regulated appropriately, meets all those standards, and will not be in sort of detriment to the public welfare. With respect to the zoning ordinance and the zone plan, you've heard earlier tonight, the planning board recently heard details, and I don't want to steal Mr. Ward's detail, so he can get into this if he would like. But they did hear amendments to the land development ordinance specifically related to cannabis uses. And the two main takeaways as it relates to this application are, one, that cannabis uses, cannabis retail uses will be permitted under that proposed ordinance in industrial districts. And two, that they will no longer be conditional requirements, but explicitly permitted uses. So as we are here today, we're requesting a use variance. In a few months' time, this use will be through the governing body as what we anticipate as a permitted use. And I think that's telling because of the way we have evolved and helped regulate these types of uses, being compatible in a variety of situations and also utilizing some of the underutilized areas in industrial zones for cannabis uses and other uses as well. With respect to the impairment of the zone plan or master plan, I don't find there's any impairment, given that that pending ordination or that pending ordinance amendment was recommended for approval by the planning board. And initially, it was supported by city planning that referred it to the planning board in the first place. So I think that's telling from my perspective with respect to planning and zoning and checks the box for no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. That really does complete the bulk of my testimony. Be happy to answer any questions or clarify any comments I made.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles. And just to clarify the record, so we have the court reporter here. It's actually twelve spaces in front of the building and then thirty-two spaces on the adjacent lot. So just so we can make sure.
In total, yes.
Yeah, in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no further questions for this witness.
Okay, thank you. Any other witnesses?
No, sir.
Okay. Board, if you don't have any questions, we can hold them till after the staff report. I should say, let me get the, are there any citizens? Any hands raised for the citizens?
At this time, I see no hands raised.
Okay. Staff comments?
Thank you, Acting Chair Green. This is Matt Ward. I'm under oath still. So this is an interesting application. The board saw a prior cannabis retailer application, but it was a it was a D-three. This is obviously a use variance here tonight. And it was also, it was alluded to, and I'll confirm that the planning board has recommended counsel an ordinance that would allow cannabis retailers in this zone as a permitted use. And that has not yet been pined on by the council, but they certainly did ask us through a resolution to prepare an ordinance, so they're expecting an ordinance, which they will see shortly. In this zone, or just in the city in general, we adopted our first ordinance regulating cannabis establishments and distributors back in August of twenty twenty-one. In, in that ordinance, this zone does not allow for cannabis retailers, however, does allow for other cannabis uses. We typically think of those as more of the industrial ones, so it was kind of a lot, you can see the logical through line there. And those are class one through four technically, but I think that if I can battle them off quickly, cannabis cultivator, wholesaler, manufacturer and distributor. And so there is, you know, it's an odd kind of duck here, but there's cannabis uses permitted in this conditionally in this zone, but this specific one is not. As testified, there's no site plan here. There's no changes to their site. They are already making improvements and plan to open as a medical cannabis, cannabis facility soon. The reason why that that's moved forward without maybe an application coming here is that we don't define that land, that medical cannabis retailer or dispensary as a land use category here in Jersey City. We actually consider it retail sales and service and that they just have to comply with state law, which they've testified they are. I'm not sure if I can provide much more testimony about this application, but I'm, I'll try to answer any questions that you may have. We did provide the applicant and uploaded today to the data portal staff memo dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. We have just one condition in there that they update. They, should the board make a decision on this that's favorable, that they update their deed with the resolution of this board?
Thank you, Matt. Do you have, with that, do you have a recommendation?
I don't believe that there's any detriment to the zone plan here. I believe that the planning testimony, it was sound.
Okay, thank you. Just a note, we're going to close the public portion, and we're going to just continue with the commissioners. If you have any questions for any of the applicants, witnesses. Okay, not hearing any. Might I hear something else? A motion.
Mister, Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case Z twenty-three dash zero twenty-three as presented to the board this evening.
I second.
There's a properly moved and seconded to approve this application. Can we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Motion approved with conditions. Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Rojo?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Green?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Iris, would you like to take?
Mr. Chairman, do we have just the one application left, or is there?
The one that I'm aware of.
Just one and then some resolutions and things like that?
Okay, I, I think I can hang in there. Thank you.
Wanted to check on you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
If nothing else, we'll go to case number sixteen. That's Z twenty-three dash O thirty-three at seventy-five Room Street.
Promoting Michael Higgins. Oh, yeah, Michael Higgins.
Okay.
Owner, actually.
Is it Stephen Joseph?
David Joseph.
Let's see. Promoting Michael Higgins to see maybe he might be taking this case?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening again, members of the board. It's, it'll be me presenting tonight. Michael, to sign up quickly, and Chirami, on behalf of the applicant, Moshe Rubin. I guess first, I'd like to confirm that counsel has received our our proof of notice.
Yes, we've received it, reviewed it. It complies your affidavit and proof of service and your notice of publication. So Iris, A one for this application.
Yes, A one is received and marked.
Okay, thank you. So this is for seventy-five to seventy-seven Room Street. This is identified on the tax map as block twelve, two oh two, lots twenty-four and twenty-five. And we're proposing a subdivision with C and D variances. As part of that project, we're going to be building a new building on the presently vacant lot. And there's an existing building on Lot twenty-five that is historic, that we'll be rehabilitating and doing some restoration work to the facade. So what's interesting here is that we're here for subdivision, subdivision approval, despite the fact that these are actually carried as two, two separate lots by the tax assessor. This is because of the merger doctrine right now, which provides that contiguous, non-conforming lots under common ownership are merged into a single lot, which is the case here. So as part of this subdivision, though, we require a D-variance because the historic building on Lot twenty-five is a pre-existing, non-conforming three-family in the R-one zone. It's important to note, though, that there's no physical expansion, as there will be no change to the number of units, the number of rooms, the dimensions to the existing building. It's only an expansion because the lots are being subdivided, so it is technically a D-two expansion of a non-conforming use variance that we need. For the subdivision, we'll also need C-variances, C-variances for minimum lot size and minimum lot width for both lots. And on the new building that we're proposing on the vacant lot, we need variances for side yard setback, rear yard setback, and a minor two-point-eight percent deviation for building coverage also. I'd like to note, too, that with regards to the rear yard setback, at least we would not need this variance if the posed R-one zoning that is going around was in effect currently, because it's proposing a standard thirty percent of the lot depth as the rear yard setback, which here would be a little bit over nineteen feet, and we're proposing a twenty-foot rear yard setback. And the same thing applies actually with the D-variance, because this is a historic building, and we are restoring it. If the new zoning was in effect, we would be permitted four units. So if that zoning was in effect, it also would not require a D-variance for the subdivision. So in sum, we're trying to use the presently vacant lot in the best way possible while preserving the historic integrity of the existing building. We're rehabilitating that building, received a report from the historic officer that our restoration plans are consistent with the Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation. So with that, I have two witnesses tonight. First will be our architect, Will Weckenman, who will walk us through the subdivision plans and floor plans. And then last will be Samuel Bellamy, who will provide some testimony with regards to the variances. Okay?
So Mr. Weck, is Mr. Weckenman the first witness, did you say?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi.
Okay, there you are. Please raise your right hand. Please raise your right hand, Mr. Wecken. Oh, I think he's frozen. There you are. Do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your full name, spell your last.
Sure, it's Willie. I can, last name W E C K E E N M A N.
Okay, Mr. Wecken. You're coming in and out.
Yeah. Says I have a bad connection.
See if it hangs in there. If not, we may have to figure it out. Right now, you're good.
Sure. Okay, great. Let me share my screen. Okay. Thank you, Michael, for the introduction and the very thorough explanation of the project. Property is located on the south side of Room Street in the R-one zone district. It's directly across the street from the Journal Square redevelopment plan. We have a photo. We have a photo of the. Existing building as well as a photo of the of the vacant lot. So before I get into the 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 site plan and the the description of the new project, the new building. Quickly touch on some of the improvements for the existing building. This is a this is a nice project. It's a in addition to a a nice infill building. We're also making improvements to the streetscape as well as restoring an existing historic building. Which is always great for the character of the existing street and neighborhood. Well, this is a larger photo.
If you turn your camera off, Will, your connection will improve.
Okay, let me try that. I'm sorry. Okay. Let's try that. Thanks, Cam. So you can see the building is in a fairly advanced state of deterioration. And we're proposing to maintain and restore all the existing decorative trim. Around the windows as well as restore the the original cornice on the building. The existing siding will be removed. I'm I'm sorry, the the shakes will remain. They were present in the historic photographs, so we're going to be. Replacing them as needed and repainting the front facade. We are also proposing a new steel railing. As well as improvements to the sidewalk and the the base of the building here. So. We think those will be some very dramatic improvements to this building. Which, as I said, will improve the the overall streetscape tremendously. So. Moving on to the site plan. What's 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 unique about this, these two properties is that the typically when we have. The side lot lines running at an angle to the the front lot line. The building tends to follow, tends to run parallel to the side lot lines. In this case, the existing building runs parallel to the to the street. So it results in kind of a somewhat of an awkward situation with regards to the sighting on the property. And as a result, with the subdivision. It actually results in a in a narrower lot than than would be the case if the building was oriented. Parallel to the side lot lines by about six feet. So the 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 new lot, the new building is is narrower than it it would be otherwise due to the. The sighting of the building and the fact that this is an existing historic structure that that obviously can't be taken down. So that's that's one of the reasons why, so maybe why. Are seeking a variance for the side yard setback. It's because of the exceptional narrowness of the the proposed lot. And and that's again due to the the way that the historic building is cited on the property. One other item to note is that the the subdivision. As as Michael mentioned, the these were two, these were two lots. At some point. And the subdivision is following the historic or what was the the original. Property line between the two properties. So the new the new building is a three story structure. We're proposing. Improvements again to the streetscape. We do have a occupied roof deck with a with a green roof area as as part of the project. As as Michael mentioned, we also have a twenty foot rear yard setback and we're proposing new landscaping. And site improvements to the to the rear of the property as well. So clearing the vegetation that's there and leveling the. And regrading the site. Moving on, we have an existing site plan, existing sites slash demolition plan. So it gives you a sense of what the. Looks like. Also skip over our standard site details here. I'll move on to the the floor plans for the the proposed building. So with these plans, Room Street is towards the bottom of of the of the page. We're proposing that the the. First floor be set back slightly from the from the front property line. And we're proposing a small landscaped. Planting bed in the front and the the orientation and the the design of this was inspired by the historic building. How it kind of sits. How it sits with relation to the property line and the streetscape. So that's how we, that's kind of the reason for this. Setback and and why we have this overhang on the upper floors. Just creates a little bit more space on the street and creates a little bit more openness on the ground floor. The we're proposing two units for the project. The ground floor unit will be on one bedroom, one bedroom apartment. We have a a living and dining area towards the front, kitchen and bathroom towards the middle. And then a bedroom towards the rear that accesses that has access to the rear yard. The upper floors of the building are a second and third floor duplex apartment. So the first level of the duplex has kitchen, living room. Small powder room as well as one of the bedrooms. And then. And the the upper floor is the it has two additional bedrooms and two additional bathrooms. As I mentioned previously, we're. Posing an occupied roof deck with a green roof area towards the front of the project and a utility area towards the rear. Here we have two. Elevations. Front and the rear. We we also have a rendered view of the of the front elevation, which I'll get to in a minute. But the the design, the building is was. The building was designed to sort of match the proportions of historic building. With regards to the size and the of the window openings as well as the overall proportions. Of the of the facade. But we do have somewhat of a contemporary twist to the design. We're using a core. Metal paneling for the for the lower level where it's recessed. And then we're proposing a a red face brick for the upper floors. Rear elevation is fairly simple. We're proposing stucco as the primary side material. But the 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 windows and the proportions of the rear of the building are are similar to the to the front. The side elevations are are fairly simple, are fairly nondescript. We're proposing stucco for for the side elevations as well. And you can see here details of the overhang in the front and the the the. The stair towards the rear. We're also dropping. Thing worth worth mentioning is we're we're dropping the parapet in the front in favor of a railing, which helps to reduce the overall bulk. Of the building. So the the height of it is. Is is lessened by 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 the railing. The brick doesn't extend all the way up to the parapet, so. It it helps to keep the the mass of the. Building down a little bit. It also is reminiscent of a of a traditional cornice with the proportions. So again, it's a it's a contemporary design, but it's informed by some some traditional, more traditional ideas. Here we have the other side elevation. Again, it's similar to the to the north side. And then finally, we have a just a a simple rendering with our material selections. So that concludes my direct testimony. Happy to answer. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
We'll hold our questions at this point. Are there any other? Witnesses?
Yes, Samuel Bellamy is our our licensed planner. If we could get him sworn in.
Okay.
Mister Bellamy, do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name.
Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L A M Y. My address, one EverTrust Plaza, Suite nine oh one, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you, witness this one.
And I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. My license is current and in good standing.
We accept.
Mister Bellamy, yes.
Yes.
He's been before us many times.
Hey, Sam, if you don't mind, sort of. Present to the board your findings and justifications for the variances.
Yep, sure, we'll do. I'm going to start off with the the minor subdivision, so I'm just going to pull up the. The survey and and minor subdivision plan, and this is what was submitted and is available on the the data portal. So here's the existing condition to the property. Mister Higgins alluded to this is I still identified as two tax lots, but has been. Since merged through co- common ownership of undersized lots. So you have a total lot size of two thousand six hundred ninety square feet. As you could see, the existing nonconforming three story, three unit historic structure is shifted over to the to the east side of the property. With the proposed subdivision, we're essentially creating a line. Down the center of the property and and keeping the existing structure on one lot. And then subdividing the the vacant portion of the property into another lot. This does require a couple bulk variances for for lot size on 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 both properties. So you have a lot size of one thousand five hundred sixty four square feet on the proposed. Lot twenty five oh one and then a lot size of one thousand one hundred twenty six square feet on the proposed. Lot twenty four point oh one. It also requires a lot width variance. You have seventeen point four feet. Four four feet for the proposed lot twenty four oh one and then also for the lot depth. There's no change to lot depth, but since we are subdividing it, that does require variances. So you have. Approximately sixty one feet on the proposed lot twenty five oh one. And approximately sixty seven feet on the proposed lot twenty four oh one. And that's measured to the the center point of the of the property. So those are the the variances related to the subdivision that that we're seeking. As Mister Higgins said in his intro, we are requesting a a D variance here. It's a D two variance. This board had the opportunity to hear another D two variance earlier in the night. This one is a little bit different situation. Again, it's an existing nonconforming. Three story, three unit building in the R R one, one and two family district. The reason for the D two expansion of a non nonconforming use variance is because. We're essentially intensifying the the nonconforming use by the subdivision and reduction in the lot size here. So there's case law and that's the Raspberry case where anytime you're reducing the lot size, you're essentially increasing the intensity of the lot. It's my opinion that. The property can continue to accommodate the the intensification of the existing nonconformity through the proposed subdivision. Of the reduction of the lot size of the property. As Mister Collins said, the the D two, the the D two test is a little less stringent than the D one test. Some of the the reasons to the special criteria is that aesthetic improvements can can be part of that. And also withstanding that the nonconforming use has already existing in the area so that. That impact has essentially been there and will will remain. So the existing three story, three unit building was determined to be historic historically significant. By the historic preservation specialists in the city, so therefore it can't be demolished. So what we're proposing is to maintain that. And rehabilitate the structure, bringing it back to life. You heard. You heard the architect go through all the improvements that were making to the structure to kind of bring it back to its historic. Elements and that that will be a significant improvement on the streetscape here. The existing building has a footprint of approximately seven hundred eleven square feet. So that building coverage on the new uh new lot area is approximately forty eight percent. So that's still substantially below the sixty five percent that's permitted for building coverage in the R one district. On the lot coverage will be at fifty seven percent. Again, that's significantly below. The eighty five percent permitted in the R one district. So that existing three unit building. Although as an existing nonconforming use, really it maintains a scale. And overall development pattern that's consistent with the surrounding area. There's no changes to the bulk of the building at all, no changes to the height. No changes to the the rear or side setback. So those conditions all remain the same. And again, continue to allow for light air and open space between the adjacent properties. The density itself is also consistent, although we are in the R one district. This is in your typical. R one districts with one and two family homes. There's a mix of multifamily uses, commercial uses in the area. Across the Room Street, you have the Journal Square redevelopment plan, so you have a higher density area across the street. And there are several other multifamily buildings in this area. So the density remains consistent with the area and again will not be changing. We're maintaining the three units that were existing on this property. The other bulk variances are related to the new development that we're proposing on the currently vacant portion of the property. There's elements to the C one test where we have to maintain the historic structure and it can't be demolished. So you heard Mister Weckman go through those conditions on on the sighting of the building and the constraints on the the side yard setback. I think there's also elements here to the C two criteria where the benefits would substantially outweigh the detriment here. Again, we're maintaining the historic building. The the proposed structure is a is a conforming two two family use in the R one district. We are proposing a rear yard setback at twenty feet. That meets the minimum required rear yard setback, but it does not meet the minimum combined. Thirty five foot front and rear yard setback. We are proposing a zero foot front yard setback, which is conforming, meeting the predominant. Setback on the block. As far as the side yard setbacks, we're proposing zero feet and zero point eight three feet. Side yard setbacks for a minimum two feet and combined five foot one inch is required here. The adjacent building to the west has a four foot side yard setback. So although we're proposing a a lot line building, no windows on that side, they're still maintaining the four foot separation between the buildings. That would meet your required if if both lots had it two feet on each side. So I think there's still maintains light air and open space. Between those structures and given the the constraints on on the lot width with maintaining the historic structure. I think this is a a design benefit that would potentially outweigh any detriments here. As far as the building coverage, we are slightly over. We're at sixty two point eight percent. We're sixty percent is permitted. We are proposing eighty eight point eight square feet of green roofing, so that offsets the additional building coverage. The footprint of the building here is seven hundred eight square feet, so that is an appropriate size again is in scale. With the surrounding buildings in scale with the existing historic building. So again, I don't see any substantial detriment to light air and open space. We are maintaining the scale on the block on this unique. Block frontage of undersized blocks. This project does promote several of the purposes of municipal land use law. This is an appropriate use and development of the property consistent with purpose A. Again, we're proposing a conforming. Two family home that's consistent in scale with the surrounding area. The density is consistent, both maintaining the historic three unit building and the two unit building proposed. Consistent with purpose E. This is an appro- appropriate location for the proposed two family building, consistent with purpose G. And then finally, I I do find there to be a substantial improvement to the the streetscape promoting a a more desirable visual environment. Both with the new construction, the infill development on the vacant lot and the substantial rehab that we're proposing to the historic structure. That's consistent with purpose I. Again, I don't see moving into negative criteria. I don't see any substantial detriment to the the. General welfare here. I I walk through that criteria. I think we are proposing appropriate setbacks, maintaining light air and open space. Likewise, I don't see any substantial impairment to the intent of the purpose in the zone planning or zoning ordinance. Think we're maintaining and promoting the purpose of the R one district. As Mister Higgins said in the intro, there are amendments to the L D O that are coming online. We would be consistent with maintaining the historic structure in that view, so we actually wouldn't require use variance in that stance, but. Here today, we're we're asking for the D two variance, and I think we do meet the positive and and negative criteria, both the. The D two variance and all the. The D two variance and all the uh related uh bulk C variances. Um that would conclude my direct testimony, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Sam, um that's all of our direct testimony. Um I'd state on the record too that all the conditions included in the staff report. And also the conditions from the memo from historic are acceptable to the applicant. So it um I think that concludes our presentation, but if any members of the board or the public have questions, um we will address it.
Okay. We'll hold our questions from the uh commissioners and the board. Uh now, are there any hands raised from the public?
No, there are no hands raised.
Okay, we get a staff report. You can close the uh public uh comment.
Um, good evening, everyone, it's Cameron again, I am the staff planner that will be giving comments on this application. Um so I I just wanted to add um a couple things. Um firstly, I am going to have to share my screen and mark into evidence. My uh planner staff report, I uh. Did not put this on the portal, so we're gonna have to mark it into evidence, um so. I'm gonna go back to the top.
So is this A two?
I think A two after the uh notice.
Okay, exhibit uh A two is received in one.
So um. Just gonna scroll through it real quick, um there's there's really only one thing in the memo that. Planning staff wanted to touch upon, and that is uh related to the street. Street tree, which you can see from this aerial here, it uh it used to be a London plane and. Um doing some digging up of old tax photos. Um here's the London plane again, um it's been severed at the top, and when. Trees are pruned this way, they very rarely recover, um also, this tree is at the end of its life, it's uh. From what I gather, it's actually over a hundred years old, uh London plane, um. And here's the nineteen thirty-eight photo, and you can see the house had two trees in front and. Just roughly estimating um the girth, it's probably somewhere between fifteen years old here, so. Um that gives you an idea of how old that tree is, and this building, this building's always been a three-family, going back to the nineteen thirties. Um so I I guess I'll just uh reiterate there, Mr. Blamey's uh testimony regarding the. Uh expansion of the three-family, planning staff has uh no issue with it, the density can be accommodated, and clearly. It's had no negative impact um on the public's general welfare, well-being, or negative impact on the zone plan or our master plan. Um so just going over some of the uh standards for consideration in the uh R one zone for the C variances. And staff was really mostly concerned with the uh side yard setbacks. And all of the side yard will have some air, light, and space. Um so it it doesn't appear um in staff's opinion. That it will have any type of, again, detriment to general welfare, well-being, air, light, space, or the. Master plan and zone plan, um so. I just want to again show the conditions now. I mentioned the tree with such detail, only to uh reiterate here, the fifth condition, which. Is um that two new street trees should be added um on the final plans for signature, and I know. Mr. Higgins has agreed to these conditions in his uh testimony. Um I just wanted to again add that, so Mr. Uh Will Weckman, if you could add that on the signature plans. Of course, we have to leave five feet right of way for ADA accessibility on sidewalks, so. These will be some strange tree pits with, I think, dimensions of a three feet in uh width with. About ten feet in length, but um we can figure out a a smaller tree to put there, likely. A uh red bud, yellow wood, um you know, crab apple, something of that sort, um but. I I guess the only additional condition which uh Mr. Higgins added for me. But I'm gonna add it officially is that a seventh condition be added to agree to the uh uh historic preservationist. Uh report and uh agree with all of the conditions that the historic department for the city has put in place here, so. Um that concludes planning staff comments, planning staff recommends approval, um. And if these conditions are acceptable, I know you already agreed to them, but if they're acceptable, um Mr. Higgins, can you please agree to them?
Yes, all the conditions are acceptable.
Okay, that concludes planning staff recommends approval.
Thank you, uh Mr. Higgins, uh are there any questions from the commissioners? Okay, uh if there are no questions.
Uh Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve K Z twenty-three dash zero three. Three, as presented to the board this evening, with recommended condition.
I second.
Okay, we're probably moving second to uh approve the application for case Z twenty-three dash oh thirty-three. Addressed seventy-five Room Street. Uh roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid.
Yes.
Commissioner Arugio.
You're.
Yes.
Okay.
I know, yes.
Acting Chairman Green.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Higgins, uh good one, project, enjoy that, good luck with it.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, uh it looks like we'll close the uh public uh portion, anyone else that's out there. We'll do uh close the meeting uh for the public.
Just have to uh memorialize some resolutions.
And then memorialize some resolutions.
Right.
So uh Francisco, are we good with that, we can. Would just be an internal uh balance of the meeting? Do I see thirteen there or?
We're good.
Okay, we're good.
Let's memorialize four resolutions, and then we can close the meeting. So the first is Z twenty-two dash zero three one. Uh the applicant was nine Nevin LLC, uh the address was nine Nevin Street. That was heard on February ninth. And on February ninth, it was seven commissioners, acting chairwoman Coil. And then Commissioner Shagid, Allen Green, Donnelly Park, and Patel. That was an application for minus site plan approval with C and D variances, and that passed seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that. And the next uh resolution, uh this case was heard on April twenty-seventh of this year. That's Z twenty-three dash zero zero eight, that was Klein Outdoor Advertising Inc. Uh that was on uh uh nine Route four forty. That was a preliminary and final site plan with D variances, that was the billboard case. Uh there were seven commissioners that evening. This uh resolution to approve passed five in favor, two opposed. Uh the two opposed were Chairman Jacobs and Commissioner Donnelly. The five voting for approval were Commissioners Shadid, Arroyo, Oil, Park, and Allen. So again, that passed five in favor, two opposed, all in favor of memorializing that.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, and the next uh case. Next two cases were heard on May eleventh. Uh the first case, uh by the way, on May eleventh, there was Chairman uh Jacobs. Commissioners Green, Silva, Arroyo, Shadid, Coil, and Park. The first case was Z twenty-two dash zero four zero. The applicant was Pascal Investments LLC, the address was seventy-four Bauer Street. That was an application for minus site plan with C and D variances. That application passed five in favor to oppose. The two opposed were Commissioners Coil and Park. And the five in favor were Chairman Jacobs, Green, Commish- uh Silva, Arroyo, and Shadid. So all in favor of memorializing that.
Hi. Hi.
And the last case uh to mem- to memorialize was Z twenty-three dash zero two seven, those are the same. Seven commissioners that we heard on May eleventh. Uh the applicant was thirty-sixty JFK LLC. Preliminary and final major site plan amendment with a D variance. That the address was two forty-four St. Paul's Avenue, formerly known as thirty-sixty JFK Boulevard. That passed seven in favor, none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that is.
Hi.
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 And that's it for the scene.
Okay.
We can wanna close the meeting and.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead.
We'll move to close the meeting and that's that, good luck, good night. And be- before I go on, one thing in the in the beginning of the meeting, did we?
Change from the sixth to the thirteenth?
Do we, do we, what, do we um?
Change the meeting date.
Yeah, did we change it from July sixth to what?
Thirteenth, I believe.
Thirteenth. Is that what we did?
Just to notice that, I mean, you know, just make sure the commissioners are aware of the change of date, and I guess you'll also make sure that all the applicants, okay?
Yeah.
Which.
Yeah, well, we have to, yeah, we'll have to make sure everything is fine with that, we'll we'll have Joeyanne do it all tomorrow.
Right, good, thank you.
But the sixth is definitely canceled, is that correct, so I can uh.
Yeah.
And accordingly.
Yeah.
Very good, okay, great, so that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you and good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, thank you, have a good night.
Yes, okay, care, bye-bye.